Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Wes Silvestri and on today's video, I'm sitting down with a very special guest, Mr. Fred Arnold. He's currently on the ballot and running for College of the Canyon's Board of Trustees. We'll discuss how he plans on improving the lives of both students and faculty. We'll find out why he's running and why he's the best person for the job. So without further ado, let's meet Fred Arnold.
Why are you doing this?
Why are you doing this?
Why are you doing this?
Fred.
Why help me out?
Because you know why? First, let me, let me start off by saying thank you. Thank you so much for sitting down with me.
You're welcome.
Here's how this started. I'm driving around and all of a sudden I see a sign that says Fred Arnold. And I go, that's interesting, I know Fred Arnold. And then I get my packet in the mail. And I'm going through it, I'm trying to do my homework, I got my measures, I'm trying to learn and educate myself about it. And all of a sudden I see College of the Canyon's Fred Arnold. So my question to you is, why are you doing this? Why is a successful lender who has closed billions of dollars in home loans, helping people achieve the American dream, wanting to transition to, to COC Board of Directors? Why?
I get this question asked a lot. I think it just, it happened by hearing about the great work the college does. For students, for our community, for our employees, and story after story after story. So then I got asked to be part of the foundation. The foundation raises money for scholarships and mini grants for the professors. And so I got looking at all the great work the professors were doing and the faculty were doing. I mean, they, they take groups of students to debate with the best four-year colleges in the country. And come back with trophies, podium, you know? I mean, it's so impressive, so you're going, wow, we have first-in-class community college. And then you see student after student getting a great degree by getting their first two years where it's affordable. In fact, I can't tell you how many students go away for their first year and the story of them coming back kind of down because they didn't, it just wasn't right for them. And, and COC elevates them again.
They do.
And I kept seeing story after story after story. And then just, just seeing those that you don't realize how many students in this valley and in this surrounding area could use our financial help.
Right.
You don't think of that. I guess story after story, we'd give them a scholarship with the foundation and it was a difference between them not getting an education and them moving on to the four-year degree.
Right.
And then we could just keep going deeper where there's a lot of those that got, let's say, lost their job and needed new training. And they get first-in-class training on the job training. So, so many reasons why, so why not?
I like that. Here's my, here's my question for the layman, for somebody who lives in the area but doesn't dive into these details. Why vote for you? When your name came up, I thought, well, this guy is so dedicated to his work. Why would a mortgage lender want to jump in and help, you know, the local community college? How do those two line up? Like, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Like, should I be looking for a position somewhere down the line?
Absolutely. You know, the reason why Board of Trustees came up for community colleges was so the community can check some balances. Fiscal responsibility. And not only that, we're a bridge between the community and the college. And so I own quite a bit of real estate. I'm very fortunate to have invested in real estate. We're building another $95 million in properties at College of the Canyon's. So I think I'm uniquely qualified to ask questions on why? Why are we doing it this way?
The college is building properties.
Oh yeah, they're building new buildings, they're, um, University Center. They're building a advanced technology center among other projects. And there's a lot of why questions you can ask to make sure we get the most value, to get, make sure we, we, we build structures for tomorrow's education, for tomorrow's jobs.
Well, I don't know if you know this, but I, you were talking to a COC alumni.
There we go. They're all-star in this community.
Thank you. Now, when I went there years ago, which feels like a generation ago, but anyway, there was, there was mumbles and talks about building dorms there. Now, was that?
That's a big controversy right now.
Was that an actual?
Well.
Or is that?
Yeah, let's, I'm gonna address it. That is a controversy that you're reading about real time. The Board of Trustees, the current Board of Trustees is sending back $62 million. They were given by the state of California. There was over 15 community colleges that were said, that applied for this money. It's a grant. The money does not have to be repaid back.
Right.
$62 million and they decided that the project wasn't, I'm not sure. I, I watched some of the meetings, they said they were gonna have a $5 million shortfall. Well, wait a second, we've already earned three and a half million dollars of that because the money's been earning interest in the banks since August of 2022. We can easily make it up. So is it really that? It was gonna house over 100 students, um, units. And so that was gonna be fabulous for, it's been said that there's over 500 students at College of the Canyon's that are homeless or couch surfing. So I'm not sure, and I wanna dig deep into it and find out why. When are we ever gonna be handed $62 million? To build, and everything is first-in-class. So to, to say that we don't have the ability to, then let's make it a public-private partnership. I don't know, let's figure out how to bridge the gap with our elected officials, with our city, with our businesses, to make it happen for our students. We're not gonna get this opportunity again.
Well, here's my question. How can you really, really make sure that the money that is given, granted, goes to what it's supposed to go to? What I see as a taxpayer, what really frustrates me is I sit there and I go, well, we're paying all these taxes. And every time I jump up into a new tax bracket, I think, where is my money going? Like, how can you make sure that my money is going to something that I actually care about? And that I actually wanna see help the community?
Yeah. That's the thing I think I'm uniquely qualified for. There's, um, there's measure E where the citizens, about a quarter billion dollars they've in bonds that were purchased to rebuild College of the Canyon's and Canyon Country. I'm the chairman of the bond oversight committee to make sure that money's spent per the, the bond requirements. And so we hire an auditor to audit that, to make sure it's within the scope of what we're doing. So I'm uniquely qualified to do that and I'm proud to do that. I'm excited to do that and I'm excited to bring that checks and balances to, to the college. But the one thing you have to keep in mind that I think myself and a few others bring to it is the community. I'm in the community every day. I'm at my work right here. I'm at meetings with the community, whether it's Valley Industry Association, Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development. Almost three, four days a week I'm at a meeting in the community. They're our voice. Right? They're our voice. It's funny, they say, well, the business, no, no, not only just business, but you have family, they have family, they have needs, they have employees. That's what it's all about. It's bringing the community to the college to make sure that the buildings we're building and the money we're spending is focused so that students can, can get hand up and, and move on to a four-year degree. They can get retrained in a job. It's, it's, it's great for them, a certificate in the job or getting back on track. So they can get out as quickly as possible and get job and, and get a job and be successful in their, in their life.
Well, right there, you touched on it a little bit. So you are boots on the ground, talking to these people currently. So as, as I've talked to current students and former students, what have you heard that is most important to the students today? Like, what are they looking for?
So today's students, if you look around this building, I, I have these executive suites where I make them fresh and fun so that we can work in nice offices, right? The Student Union, if you go there, needs to be redone quickly. Students have nowhere to gather. I mean, that's 34 years old.
It's the same as when I went there.
Why isn't, I mean, if, if, if it's important for us to be in fresh environments, why wouldn't it be important for us to make that a number one priority?
Correct.
They have not yet, they need to make it a number one priority because students right now need a place to gather, need a place to study, need a place to meet other people, an inspiring place to study. Food, food's a big issue on campus.
I'm glad you said that. How do you revamp the food system so that we're not just sitting there continuously poisoning these kids with this junk food? Like, I am a huge health proponent, right? I am all about getting your steps in, physical activity, eating healthy. How do we cut out the junk that these kids are getting force-fed because it's cheap and fast?
Well, it's interesting because a lot of times you can't get food on campus. There's only certain hours where there's.
Where it's open.
Exactly. So what do they got vending machines, right? The only thing in vending machines is typically crap food. I think you need to have a public-private partnership. I think you need to pick certain days where businesses come in in the evening and they offer. One of the aha's I had, I was at Red Rocks and I was at a concert. The concert's over, there's Chick-fil-A. Boom. Pay a couple bucks, get a meal for the road. Why, why is it when, when the students are running from their job at five o'clock to their class at six or six to seven, is there not grab and go food?
Right.
From, uh, uh, from companies in town? They can very well provide that service.
So I know multiple local people who own, like, a Pola Greek Grill. She is local, she lives in the community. The guy from Jersey Mike's, he owns all these Jersey Mike's.
Yeah, Steve.
So why not partner with locals who already have business here rather than bring in like another Starbucks? Right? Why not?
I, I love that. And so it's not the trustee's job to bring those companies in. It's the trustee's job to ask the president or the chancellor, hey, here's a vision that we have. We wanna improve mental health. And I think part of it is collaboration, part of it is food, part of it is everything that we need, they need, right? Why don't we ask these questions of the president who goes and executes?
Exactly.
Or we provide the, the connection.
Right.
That's perfectly fine because we want a president that's gonna be focused on running the college. If we have connections to, to the private, to the community, we're able to forge that.
I'm just sitting there as a former student thinking, what would I have wanted? And you know, if I walk into the cafeteria and there's 17 vending machines all serving crab, I would almost rather just have one or two actual small restaurants. You know, it just makes sense because sitting there in, in class, just drained physically, you're malnourished, you're not wanting to do, you're running from, you're, you're not sleeping properly, you're cramming for tests. What's the most important? It's, it's proper sleep and proper nutrition. And that sets you up for the future.
Sets you up for success, places to rest, places to eat. And, and I think that it's philosophy. I think when you can bring in the business community to work with the, the administration and, and the full-time faculty, the part-time faculty, the adjuncts and the staff and say, what do you want? And they tell us, okay, what do the students want? And let's build a policy around that so they, when making decisions, it's around that policy.
Okay.
And I think that's the key because as a trustee, I'm not gonna say, hey, you need to call Jersey Mike's, Steve, and you need to set this up. Here's a connection, here's a philosophy, let's find out what the students want. And let's execute.
When I hear people say it takes so long for government to do things, how do you fast-track things? And I don't mean like, uh, you put an idea together today and it's done tomorrow. I get that, there, there takes some things, but it doesn't need to take a decade to see some work getting done.
No, not at all. And, and so the former chancellor was fantastic at that. She just said, how do we break barriers to get stuff? And I think that now that she's no longer with us, she doesn't, uh, she's retired.
Diane?
Yes, Diane Van Hoek. And, and had a great retirement for her yesterday. She's, she's a brilliant woman and deserves so much credit. So let me make that clear. I think it's, um, I think it's, there's the barriers we put up ourselves. I, I think having, again, a policy that says, let's break the barriers so that we can serve our students is absolutely critical. Like, what is it that we have to do because of law? I mean, if we're building a building and it needs to go to bed and there's all rules around it, right? But when bringing vendors in, do they have to be certain vendors or not? How do we immediately meet the needs of the students? And of course, the full-time faculty so that they're healthy, so that they're happy, so that they're rested and so they can succeed. And it's all in policy and it's all making sure that policy gets executed.
Right. Well, here's just a, a suggestion box.
I love that.
You know, I like the idea of a local business going into the local community college. And I realized that the amount of space that's there, it'll take millions and millions of dollars to expand. But what if there was just like a condensed menu of these certain things? You know? Rather than 100 things to choose from, what if you have five? At least there's something healthier, but that's neither here nor there.
I wanna mention something about that because I think one of the things that will be uniquely, that the next board is gonna be uniquely responsible for and I'll be responsible for is hiring the next president or, and/or chancellor, whatever they wanna call him, right? And making sure that person's willing to look outside the box.
Now, is this a stepping stone? Does this mean you're gonna be?
Oh, no, not at all. I don't have a background in administration or, or education. I have a background in people and the community, right? So no, but hiring the right person. And I think hiring the right person sets the tone for the next two decades. And you can't get that wrong. And so, um, there's currently a temporary administrator there now. But I believe hiring the right visionary like Diane was. And whatever the vision is of the Board of Trustees taking the information from faculty and staff and the students. So we can have a first-in-class community college in 10 years. It's first-in-class now. But when it doesn't, when, when you have complete leadership change, complete leadership change, how does that future look? You gotta hire the right president.
So if we're looking to the future and we're already seeing these astronomical prices for tuition, for books, for, I mean, you name it. How do you combat that? How do you, like, I get it, it's a community college, it's, it is cheaper technically than going to a four-year, but it's still very expensive for most. So how do you, what do you see yourself doing to help the students out in that aspect?
Well, a couple of the initiatives they have, we need to push is zero textbook. Zero textbook cost. So there's, there's, there's a program that allows for that. And I think that's huge because that could match or double the prices that class.
Most of the classes I took, the books were more than the classes. And I didn't even read the book. I would go to the class. But yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's huge. I think continue our first-year promise where now it's two, uh, two years, first two years of college paid for. That's phenomenal. I think we have Cougar Care. So on the foundation, we have a fund, it's got over $20,000 in it. And it just, students can come and, and ask, I need help with X. And it's a 24 to 48-hour process to get them the money. It's not a scholarship, why do you need it? Well, I can't drive my car because it's 1984 and it's got a flat tire. So I don't have, I can't get to school. Do we help them with passes? The Uber passes, do we help them? How do we get them to school? Cause that's the barrier. And for every student, it's different. And I think that if you bring the, the, uh, private-public partnership and you bring scholarship money for that, you eliminate a ton of barriers.
I mean, if, okay, so if you're doing zero cost for books, let's just say.
And then you got first-year promise paying for tuition.
But how do you do that without increasing taxes? Where does that money, is that possible to give stuff away? But where does it come from?
Okay, so, so let me just say, Santa Clarita Valley pays more than its fair share that, that it gets back.
Oh, yeah.
In other words, the money goes to Sacramento and a dollar doesn't, every dollar that goes there doesn't come back to Santa Clarita.
And that right there is why I'm doing this interview is because.
It's not dollar-for-dollar.
I feel like so many people argue about the White House and it's like, quit it. Focus on your house right here. You're gonna see more impact. So yeah, go ahead, explain that to us.
So, so the money goes to Sacramento. And because we're not considered a low-cost area, even though there's low, we serve a lot of low, of those that are not economically advantaged. And, and, and we serve them with less dollars. And so I think we go to Sacramento, we fight for our fair share. When I was the president of Mortgage Broker Association and I'm gonna probably say, I was the president during the downfall of 08. And yeah, they were saying, well, why did you do this? Why, we came up with solutions to protect all Americans now. Some laws that went on the national side and on the state side that, that were solutions. So I'm, I'm ready to go. Let's go to Sacramento and figure out how to get our dollars back to our community like they should be.
Now, I, I personally, I, I help out a friend and we donate to the local SCV charity, the SCV Grocery.
Yeah, they're great.
And they're fantastic. But what we see as frustrating is that bigger nonprofits will come out here at Santa Clarita and swoop in. And then they don't even care about the, the people that we're feeding. They wanna get the, the spotlight shined on them. And so we have to beg and plead Sacramento, hey, can we please get a grant? Can we please get, and they, they throw us crumbs when they don't see the people who it's truly affecting. So I love that idea of going to Sacramento and saying, hey, we need this.
But you know what's interesting, when the earthquake hit, no, and, but.
Ninety?
Ninety-four. So I was living in Saugus. Roads were shut off. We took care of our own. Right? We took care of our own.
As you should.
Yeah, and we went to our neighbors, we helped them out. We shared water. We did what we had to do to help our own. And I think that that starts here. Not only do we go to Sacramento, get our dollar-for-dollar back if we can. But how can our community continue to support? And that's the one thing, the current Board of Trustees, one of them has been to a few meetings in the, in the city with the business committee and that's it. No one else has, as far as my knowledge is. That needs to come back. We need to go to our, our own community, our own successful businesses and say, can we do workforce, workforce, uh, training? Can we, can you partner with us on X, Y, or Z? Whether it be scholarships, workforce training, giving, getting their employees as being the first-in-class teachers and, and professors, adjunct professors? I think we go back in the community and we use it. Our community is a gem. But we're not tapping it. And I believe we need to at our local community college.
I think what I have heard in, not only living here, going to school here and selling real estate here, is that it's the Santa Clarita bubble, right? And I hear a lot of people complain about it, but those same people have never traveled outside the bubble.
Oh my God, go to LA, just go to the Pantages Theater. Okay, you're gonna have to park a couple blocks away. And you're gonna have, by the way, a lovely, you know, uh, show. But you're stepping over homeless people.
So many.
You're stepping over a lot of drug problems. It is, it is really truly sad challenge. And we're blessed to be here. We're blessed to be able to provide, not only that, University Center. Where you can get, you have, you have, let's say you have a two-year degree. You haven't finished your four-year, you wanna go back, you have two children and you're working full-time. Okay, whether you're a man or a woman, doesn't matter. You can go just to the University Center and finish your degree. And you're to and from home in, in eight minutes. If not, you're going to Cal State Northridge, you're doing online, you're going to Bakersfield, you're going somewhere other than five minutes, 10 minutes from your children. I think that's what we need to continue to focus on is our people and those that wanna get served by our community college.
I mean, they don't call it USC for a reason, University of Santa Clarita.
Oh man, you were scaring me with that.
No, no, no.
My kids are brewing, so.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. Uh, I got one right here. What measures will you take to improve transportation and parking for not only the students but the staff as well? And is that a college issue or is that a entire Santa Clarita Valley issue?
Yeah, I think that's a valley issue, if you will, because I don't think the college has, is gonna have the budget for transportation, right? But how do we partner with the city to get students from the Santa Clarita Valencia campus to the Santa Clarita Canyon Country campus and not take an hour and a half on public transportation? How do you get a direct route? I mean, they have it for the seniors, which is fantastic, senior center. They have a bus that goes around, take you to your appointments. How do we have that same kind of service so students that have to go on the other side of, of town? Also, um, one of the most brilliant things ever was Uber and Lyft. They, they were, they revolutionized transportation. You know, how do we partner with them to help some of our students get to and from campus?
I mean, just throwing this out there, why not create a College of the Canyon's carpool? That almost sounds nice.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but, but then that goes back to University Center. Where do you get students together so they actually do carpool? How do you have online chats so that that happens? It's a philosophy more than anything else because the Board of Trustees aren't gonna necessarily solve these issues. They're gonna find out what the issues are and they're gonna make sure they create policies in place so they have student success first. First. Now, let me say that first, number two, making sure staff and faculty have what they need. And then, which is, which is number two. And number three, making sure the community is involved in that decision.
Is there a College of the Canyon app?
Oh, there's not, to the rest of my knowledge, there's not. They have right online.
See, right there, that could just be something that's, I mean, where did Facebook start? Facebook was a university app. Okay, so what if, what if there was a College of the Canyon app where somewhere in there, there was a carpool and it would help students not only get to know each other, but maybe cut down the cost on transportation? And it could be as simple as it's literally on your phone.
Yeah, I think what you do is, is you bring these ideas to ASG. And you say, hey, who on campus could create this? Because I guarantee you, there's a lot of geniuses on campus, so many geniuses on campus or entrepreneurs or outside-the-box thinkers that this could happen. And again, it comes to hearing all voices, hearing an idea and, and encouraging people to run with it.
That's it.
And I think it's absolutely critical. And it also includes, um, making sure that, that ingenuity is foremost. Even, even in a community college, why can't we have MIT ingenuity?
Exactly.
You know, why not? And I think that that's a philosophy that you have. You have to create a vision for the future. You have to create, um, a vision, policies, so this stuff can be executed.
When I went there, I think the, the black mark on it was, nobody wanted to go to a community college.
Because it was a junior college, so it was a junior. And, and, but it never really was junior.
But you know what wasn't explained to me by adults, and here I am an adult now, is that nobody cares. This education you're gonna get is fantastic. It's so good, but when you get out into the real world, no one's gonna ask you your grades.
And nobody's gonna ask you, did you go to a junior college your first year?
Exactly.
Community college?
No one cares.
I mean, I went to Northridge and no one's ever asked, what was my GPA? Or, um, did I go to a junior, what school did, I finished at?
Cal State Northridge. You wanna make sure that the person you're hiring for, whatever it is you're hiring for, is good at their job, is qualified to do the job. Now, if that person started a community college, it doesn't matter. Are they the right person for the job? And that's all it comes down to.
And I love that. And, and the last thing I wanna address is something that's been controversial. I'm running against an opponent that's backed by the union. And they've, there's four of us running on, if you will, a slate or a group, right? From the community. Um, all with different varying backgrounds from the community. And they're backing everybody that's part of the union, if you will, or union-backed money or someone they recommend, which is fine. But they villainize me to that where I don't like faculty. Most of my employees have been with me 15-plus years. Why? Because I make sure when I sign the front of a check, the person who's printed on the front of the check is taken care of. Whether it be benefits, time off, work environment, workload. That's, that's one of the misconceptions that I think they've been spreading and I wanna make it crystal clear. A happy, well-trained, um, healthy staff, including faculty, including adjuncts, including the full-time staff. Everybody is a successful organization. And I wanna make that crystal clear. They're, they're gonna, they're gonna break up the union. Well, you can't do that. Um, they're gonna take away cost of living increases. You can't do that. I mean, they're saying all these fearful things and it goes against what I believe and why I've been fortunate enough to have employees that have worked for me for a long time because they're number one.
Right. Yeah. Well, here's my follow-up question to that is, I firmly believe that teachers across the board are underpaid. So how do you go about making sure that the teachers truly get what they deserve? Whereas if they're just getting the minimum, that they're probably putting out minimum effort.
Well, I, I would say that our full-time faculty puts out 100% effort because they get paid very well. And I don't say that to, to, to make it sound like I'm gonna stop paying them very well. They get paid well because they're first-in-class.
Yeah, they're fantastic.
Number one, so you keep that going.
Of course.
But I think you do, uh, you look at, you look at the adjunct professors. The ones coming from the street, if you will, they have a job somewhere else. Or they're working two or three, uh, different, uh, community colleges. And you make sure they're getting paid as much as you can afford to continue to have high-class education. Simply because they're, they're pulling a lot of the weight. And so I'm a big fan of the adjuncts. And I think that wherever we can get more money from Sacramento, um, per student, how do we make sure we, we have a first-in-class adjunct professors?
I love that.
And then, of course, the staff. I mean, if you don't take care of the people that take care of the classroom, then you're not gonna have a clean, good, efficient classroom. And so I think it's important we get the money from Sacramento to make sure we maintain the first-in-class faculty. To make, they're not going anywhere. They get paid very well and they're well taken care of and they're well respected by me and many others. And we have to look at the adjuncts and we have to look at staff. We have to make sure everybody in the system is being paid for their hard work and they are happy.
I love that. This one, this, this was very insightful for me. Cause normally I'm just sitting there, you know, looking at my material and just seeing a bunch of names and then I have to dive into it. And I feel like this really pulled the curtain back and showed a bunch of, you know, the people around Santa Clarita, who you really are. And I have to tell you that I'm here because I have closed many deals with you. And working with lenders, a lot of times, they're all talk. You get a lot of communication upfront and then they fall off the radar.
When things get tough, that's when you need to communicate even more.
Yes. And that right there is the biggest compliment I can give you is because this man has, the one deal that I can remember is with a good friend of mine, she was pregnant, so their emotions are through the roof. Not only selling a house, but buying another one, that's a contingency. So everyone's just so, and you, my friend, made it incredibly smooth from start to finish. And so I just hope that you take that same dedication that you have in helping people achieve the American dream into College of the Canyon. So with that, you can feel free to just look at that camera and just give us a final sign-off. What do you have to tell?